Hi everybody, it's great to have you join with us on this next session of our online Bible study. The Bible study we're currently working through is called Renovare. It's all about the potential to renew, to be renewed spiritually. And in order to explore this series, what we're doing is we're looking at different Christian traditions and we're reflecting on them through the life of Jesus and through wider Scripture before thinking about how that applies to our lives today. Today, in this session, we're going to be looking at the charismatic tradition. But before we start particularly looking at that together, let's just pause for a moment and share prayer. You see, the challenge for us is in this Bible study group in these sessions is that we share this together, but we are scattered. And so much of Bible study comes from the discussions and the questions, the things that we observe differently from one another. So let's just take moments to pray together, praying that God would really reveal new things to us through His Word today. And also praying that although we are scattered, that God would unite us. And maybe this evening or whenever it is you're watching this, you would be able to find someone to talk about these things with. Maybe to pick up the phone afterwards and call someone that you're used to worshiping with. Maybe send some messages in our group chat to explore what you feel about the charismatic tradition and the work of the Spirit in your life. Maybe you want to have a private message, feel free to message me through any of the different channels or a phone call to just explore what it means for us. But before we do that, let's just open in prayer together.
Lord God, you never change. Your love remains with us all from generation to generation. We thank you for all the testimonies, songs, prayers and deep truths gathered together into the Bible. For these ancient Scriptures that come alive even today as we study, so we say this prayer together now. Almighty God, as we gather together to learn, to grow and to change, help us to move into a deeper understanding of your truth. We lay our lives down before you and ask that you would move amongst us. May we all feel safe with each other, safe to think and question, safe to ask for help and safe to share our lives with you, our loving heavenly Father. Amen.
And so this evening we turn to the charismatic tradition. And I wonder for you, as you hear that this evening, as you think about that, what other things that come to mind? What pictures or images does that conjure up for you? I wonder what you know about the charismatic tradition or what maybe we think we know. It might be that as we hear that, we think about people raising hands in worship. It might be that we think about people praying boldly aloud, speaking in tongues. It might be that we picture the movement of the Spirit as people respond, that they might shake or they might fall. The reality is that the charismatic tradition is all about groups of people who seek to live a spirit empowered life. They're people who are open to the presence of the Holy Spirit. They're open to the gift of the Holy Spirit. They're open to the power of the Holy Spirit. That is certainly how they relate to Jesus, how they relate to God. And it's through the power of the Spirit at work that really motivates and pushes their faith. That's the foundation of the charismatic tradition. And yet what we see as we look into God's Word is we see how much this was a part of the life of Jesus. We see how from, you know, day one of creation, Trinity was there, God the Father creating, Jesus, the Word of God being spoken and the Spirit of God hovering over the waters. That's what we're told in Genesis, in chapter one and in verse one. And so as we begin to study and look at God's Word together tonight, let's first of all take a look at Jesus, at his life on earth and the role that the charismatic tradition, the role that the Holy Spirit played for him. In the earliest verses which speak about the physical and existing life of Jesus, we find Mary being told that she's going to be with child. And Mary naturally, you know, asks, "How will this be? How will this work?" And what Mary is told is that, that Jesus will come into being, the Word of God will take on flesh because of the work of the Holy Spirit. What we know here is that the life of Jesus, taking on flesh, the incarnation of Christ, it wouldn't have been possible without the work of the Spirit in the life of Mary. In Luke's Gospel, in chapter one from verse 35, the angel responded to Mary's questions and said, "The Holy Spirit will come on you and the power of the Most High will overshadow you. So the Holy One to be born will be called the Son of God." I mentioned that in Genesis, right at the beginning of all creation, you know, the Father God, Jesus the Son and the Holy Spirit's presence were there, all working together. And as Jesus came to earth, it was the three of them working together to bring deity to humanity. As Jesus grows and starts his ministry, we see that the presence of the Holy Spirit is very much upon him. He has a wisdom and an authority that is obviously different to others around him. One of the really clear Scripture readings that we can see the presence of the Spirit in the life of Jesus that we can turn to just now is if we look to Matthew's Gospel and in chapter three. In Matthew's Gospel, chapter three and from verse 13, we read about the baptism of Jesus. We read that Jesus came from Galilee and he came to Jordan in order to be baptized by John. But John tried to deter him, it says, saying, "No, Jesus, you know, I need to be baptized by you." Jesus replied, "You know, let it be so now. It's proper for us to do this. It's proper for us to fulfill the righteousness." And so John consents. It says from verse 16, "As soon as Jesus was baptized, he came up out of the water. At that moment, heaven was opened and he saw the Spirit of God descending on him like a dove and alighting on him. And a voice from heaven said, 'This is my son whom I love. With him I am well pleased.'" In that snapshot moment of the life of Jesus, once again, we see the Trinity united, combined and working together. We see the Son of God, we see the man of Jesus being baptized by John in the Jordan. As Jesus comes up out the water, there is this sense and this awareness of the Spirit of God resting on him, literally like a dove resting on his head. What a beautiful image. I love that phrase, you know, "alighting on him." And in those moments, the voice of God speaks and there is this unity amongst them. But as Jesus continues in his ministry, what we see is that that Spirit doesn't leave him. The presence of the Spirit in his life wasn't there just for those holy and precious moments of baptism. Because as we carry on and look into chapter four of Matthew's Gospel, the very first verse of chapter four reminds us that Jesus was then led by the Spirit. As Jesus moved on from that experience, the Spirit stayed with him, the Spirit stayed on him. He, like the charismatics of our traditions, he also sought to live this spirit empowered life, not just for one-off experiences, but that he was moved by the Spirit, knowing the Spirit's presence and gifting and the Spirit's power. Some of the very beautiful verses we can read as we continue to explore how Jesus spoke about the Spirit and moved in the Spirit is when he spoke to the disciples about what they could experience, what they could expect. There's verses we read in John's Gospel in chapter 14, where Jesus promises the gift of the Holy Spirit. Jesus is sharing here, you know, that the Spirit has been on him and moving within him and his life for all these years. And yet Jesus is not, as he leaves this earth, going to leave us as orphans. He's not going to abandon us. But he is going to send and to give this most precious gift of the Holy Spirit to his disciples. "If you love me, keep my commands, and I will ask the Father, and he will give you another advocate to help you and to be with you forever, the Spirit of truth. The world cannot accept him, because it neither sees him nor knows him. But you know him, for he lives in you and he will be in you. I will not leave you as orphans. I will come to you. Before long the world will not see me anymore, but you will see me, because I live, you also will live. On that day you will realise that I am in my Father, and you are in me, and I am in you. Whoever has my commands and keeps them is the one who loves me. The one who loves me will be loved by my Father, and I too will love them and show myself to them." Those verses give us hope and promise of being part of this beautiful unity, this beautiful community of the Trinity, this beautiful relationship of the Father, of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, the fact that they are intrinsically linked. And that as we believe in Christ, as we believe in him, as we love him and as we follow him, we are invited into that unity, into that community. Those verses also allude to some of the question marks about the work of the Spirit. The fact that it's hard for us to fully understand because it's not something we can see. It's not something that we can maybe experience in all the different tangible ways, using all of our senses. But yet Jesus promises that the gift of this Holy Spirit will be with us forever for those who believe. The gift of the Holy Spirit will be given and it will live right there within us. Before we move on into looking at the wider Scripture, which teaches us about the work of the Spirit and living that spirit empowered life, I wonder what your experience is of the Holy Spirit? I wonder how charismatic you are? I wonder for you, you know, being a believer, being someone that loves and follows Jesus, what part does the Spirit have in that for you? We spoke about some of the questions and the mysteries that surround the work of the Holy Spirit. And I wonder for you, what are your questions? Maybe you could take time to actually write those down, maybe pause just to think, "What is it that I'd like to know more? What questions do I have?" And maybe in the coming days, weeks and months, we can explore those questions a little bit further. As we think about the work of the Holy Spirit in the life of God's people, I am mindful of the different Scripture verses that help us to see this and understand this. I can't help but thinking on this, turn straight to Genesis, to chapter two this time and looking at, you know, for that first human, for those first people that God created, you know, how they were brought to life, how they were brought to being. In Genesis and chapter two and verse seven, we read about, you know, "God forming Adam out of the dust of the ground." And it says this, I'll share it with you, "Then the Lord God formed a man from the dust of the ground." "And he breathed into his nostrils the breath of life, and the man became a living thing." We each know how very important breath is. Without it, we literally would not be alive. We would not be here to share. In these verses, we see that, you know, that this Father Creator God who is bringing together all these different things and creating this world of ours, you know, it's all there, it's all present, but it's not living until he breathes upon it. The dust of the ground has been formed, but it's not a human. He's not a human until the breath of life has entered his body. I feel that that is so important as we consider the charismatic tradition in our life. The reality that everything can look as it should, everything can be as it should. But if the Spirit's presence isn't there, where is the life? Often the Holy Spirit is referred to as the breath of God. And that's very much the path that my mind is following in our Bible study this evening. As Adam was literally filled with the breath of God, I wonder what that would look like for you and I to be filled with his breath today? There's an amazing picture of this, which is given in the book of Ezekiel. There are amazing words of prophecy, which as we read them, they almost sound like this fictional story that someone has, you know, written and created for a modern day film. Let's turn to those words together. Let's, I invite you to listen to them just now. And I invite you to watch a representation of these verses. I pray that they will bring them to life for us today. This Scripture reading can be found in the book of Ezekiel, as I've said, in chapter 37. And this passage, this chapter is called "The Valley of the Dry Bones." Let's listen and read and watch these words just now.
"The hand of the Lord was upon me. He brought me out by the Spirit of the Lord and set me in the middle of a valley. It was full of bones. He led me back and forth among them, and I saw a great many bones on the floor of the valley. He asked me, 'Son of man, can these bones live?' I said, 'O sovereign Lord, you alone know.' Then he said to me, 'Prophesy to these bones and say to them, 'Dry bones, hear the voice of the Lord. I will make breath into you and you will come to life. Then you will know that I am the Lord.' So I prophesied as I was commanded, and as I was prophesying, there was a noise, a rattling sound, and the bones came together, bone to bone. I looked, and tendons and flesh appeared on them, and skin covered them. But there was no breath in them. Then he said to me, 'Prophesy to the breath and say to it, 'Come from the four winds, O breath, and breathe into these slain, that they may live.' So I prophesied as he commanded me, and breath entered them. They came to life and stood up on their feet, a vast army."
I wonder what you think of that Scripture reading, if it's one you've turned to many a time or if it's one that you've not looked at too often. Have to say, it's actually one of my favourites. And I love it because it's just so visual, this prophecy, this experience, this vision that Ezekiel has. I also love it because it just captures the transformation. It captures the power of God at work. For me, it captures the fact that everything can seem dead, everything can seem done, everything can seem like it is finished. Those are familiar words, aren't they? And yet the life of God comes, the breath of God comes, and it lives. We're really not long through celebrating Easter and it almost mirrors that story, doesn't it? That everything seems lost, everything seems battered and bruised and dying and gone. But yet it is not finished. For the Spirit of God, the power of God breathes and works and moves, and nothing is impossible. For people who worship through the charismatic tradition, they have this real deep longing to see that work amongst us today. They want to live that spirit empowered life, which not only experiences it for themselves, but sees the work of God around them. They're open to his presence today through the Holy Spirit, through the spiritual gifts which we're told in Scripture that he gives. And they're open to this most unexpected, unbelievable work and power of the Holy Spirit. The wonderful thing as we explore these wider Scriptures is that we're told that we can experience that today, that actually the Holy Spirit is amongst us, is at work, is living in the believers of God today. And that that Holy Spirit is a gift still for all people and for all time. As we explore that together just now, I invite you to turn to the book of Acts, to chapter two in particular, where we read about that first Pentecost, when the gift of the Holy Spirit was given to the disciples. Jesus had talked to them about the Spirit. He'd in fact breathed the Spirit over them as he stood amongst them in the rooms where the doors were locked. But here in Acts two, the Spirit of God is given like never before. In Acts chapter two and from verse one, we read about the actual events and activities of that day. And I share them with you just now. It says this, "When the day of Pentecost came, they were all together in one place. Suddenly a sound like the blowing of a violent wind came from heaven and filled the whole house where they were sitting. They saw what seemed to be tongues of fire that separated and came to rest upon each of them. All of them were filled with the Holy Spirit, and they began to speak in other tongues, as the Spirit enabled them to. Now there were staying in Jerusalem God-fearing Jews from every nation under heaven. When they heard this sound, a crowd came together in bewilderment, because each one heard their own language being spoken. Utterly amazed, they asked one another, 'Aren't all these who are speaking Galileans? How is it then that each of us hears them in our own native language? Parthians, Medians, Elamites, residents of Mesopotamia, Judea and Capadocia, Pontus and Asia, Egypt and the parts of Libya near Cyrene, visitors from Rome, both Jews and converts? We hear them declaring the wonders of God in our own tongues. Amazed and perplexed, they asked one another, 'What does this mean?' What I like there is not only the experience for the disciples, but for those looking on the impact that it had for them. And the whole reason that they knew that something was happening, something was occurring is the fact that they heard this sound. We read in Ezekiel that as the breath of God breathed on the bones, there was this rattling sound. And here we find in Acts chapter two, that as the breath of God blows, as this wind blows, there is this sound and it draws people to it. It means that something is happening. And in those moments, the disciples were touched in a brand new way by the Spirit. And having sought this spirit enabled and empowered life, here they were, we're told, that they were able to speak as the Spirit enabled them to do. And how wonderful that that meant others heard this word in their native tongue. How wonderful. It would be easy for us to say, "But that was then. That was way back then when Jesus had not long ascended to heaven. What about now? What about a Pentecost for us?" The promise is that for everyone who loves God, for everyone who believes that the Spirit can live in them. There is that potential, there is that opportunity, if we make ourselves available, if we are willing. As Acts chapter two continues, we read from verse 17, a reference to old time prophecy from Joel. This promise that came so many years before, and it was true for the disciples in this day, and it's true for us now, I believe. "In the last days, God says, 'I will pour out my Spirit on all people. Your sons and your daughters will prophesy; your young men will see visions; your old men will dream dreams. On my servants, both men and women, I will pour out my Spirit in those days, and they will prophesy. I will show wonders in the heavens above; I will show signs on the earth below, blood and fire and billows of smoke. The sun will be turned to darkness and the moon to blood before the coming of the great and glorious day of the Lord, and everyone who calls on the name of the Lord will be saved.'" Those words of prophecy and words of promise can still today be fulfilled in our life. The fact that in our day, in our time, that the men and the women, the boys and the girls who believe in God, who love Jesus, can be filled with the Holy Spirit. And that means that we will be empowered and enabled. If we are open to the presence of God, if we are willing to receive the Holy Spirit, we will be given the gifts of God. These are outlined further, particularly in the book of Galatians. I encourage you, follow in this. Go and read those verses. Go and explore those spiritual gifts that the Holy Spirit gives. And it's when we allow his presence, when we embrace his gifts, that we see his power at work. And so having looked at the life of Jesus, having looked and thought about the charismatic tradition, having read through some of that wider Scripture, and there's so much more we could read together, we see that there is this great potential from the promise and from the prophecy. We see that all people who believe and who love the Lord have this opportunity if we wait on him. And so I wonder for you and I, what is the work of the Holy Spirit in our lives today? How available are we to his work, for his power moving within us? How willing are we to be empowered by him? Lord, I pray that we will hear that sound. I pray that we will hear the sound of you at work, of your Spirit breathing over us. I pray that we will see that transformation, that the dark and the dry and the dead bones literally gather and gather flesh and gather breath and life and stand there with passion and with purpose and with power. I pray that we will make ourselves available, that we will wait on God as the disciples waited in that upper room at Pentecost. May we wait on God openly available and willing. May we be bold enough to pray, "Breathe on me, breath of God. Fill me with life anew." I wonder if you join me in making that prayer today? Maybe for the first time, and this could be your spiritual baptism. Maybe this has happened for you many times before, but could be a poignant times where we come to life again, knowing that the Spirit of God can fill us and empower our lives in a beautiful, charismatic way.
"Breathe on me, breath of God. Fill me with your life anew. That I may love like you love, do the works that you call me to. Breathe on me, breath of God, until my whole heart is pure. Until I say not my will, but yours will be done, my Lord. Breathe on us, fill us with your holy power. You give your gifts with a measure, fill these earth and jars with your treasure. Breathe on us, fill us with your holy fire. Burn Jesus' name on our hearts. Oh God, set your people apart for your glory. Breathe on me, breath of God, until I'm told to be yours. Clothe me with your fire divine."
And so I invite you to join me in prayer. Father God, I want to thank you for the absolute gift and joy of being in relationship with you. And I thank you, Lord, that we can have that unity and be part of the relationship with you, Father, Son and Holy Spirit. Lord, I pray that today we will learn those deep and beautiful lessons from the charismatic tradition. I pray, Lord, that we will have a heart that is willing and available and open to your work through your Holy Spirit. I ask, Lord, that right this very day, you will breathe your life into our hearts and lives. I pray, Lord, that we will hear that that is happening. I pray that we will see that transformation. I pray, Lord, that we will stand a vast army. I pray that like those early disciples, you will add to your kingdom daily those who are being saved. And I pray, Lord, that you will help us to be the witnesses who see your power at work. Father, I pray for each person that's shared in this Bible study today. And I ask that you will bless them, that you will anoint them, and that you will help them with their life, Lord. May they know your presence, may they know your gifts, may they know your power today, I ask, in your beautiful name. Amen. And so as we conclude this Bible study together today, I just remind you of that invitation I shared to start with, to continue this conversation. It's not as easy as it has been when we study together around the table. But maybe this evening, maybe today, whatever time you're watching this, maybe you could send a message out to someone and explore this conversation. Add a message to our group chat, pick up the phone and call that friend. Send me a message and tell me about the journey that you're on exploring this. Let's ask questions together. None of us have all the answers, but we can talk to God about this. We can keep learning. We can keep growing and we can keep, thank the Lord, being breathed upon by him and his Holy Spirit. May God bless you and use you in the days ahead. Bye-bye.